I think this week we've done like five months of meetings, right?
Good evening, everyone. We're about to commence the meeting today for City Council's special meeting agenda for January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. We encourage all members of the public to participate in the meeting via teleconferencing. You guys have that information. Can we have roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Roth?
Present.
Councilmember Mann?
Present.
Councilmember Soto?
Present.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Present.
Mayor Moran?
Present.
For the record, councilmembers, mayor, Protem, and mayor are in attendance.
Next, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? If we can please remain standing for our first responders and military members. Thank you. Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none. Next, we have citizens' comments. At a special meeting, members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter on the agenda may do so at this time. Note, under the provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. Are there any comments on the phone? Any comments in the chambers? Seeing none. Our next item is discussion and potential action items. Item number one, designate delegates for the Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, two thousand and twenty-three, one voice trip on May ninth through the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. In the past, if I remember correctly, I think some of you guys have been here longer than me, but there has been both either appointees or volunteers for this trip. So, Mr. Mayor Protem, since you have more experience, have you participated in those trips before? Can you tell us a little bit about it?
Yes, I have participated in those events over the years, and it is a great learning experience for our members. I encourage everybody to at least make the pilgrims at least at once. One time, we were very successful in contacting our representatives there to where we found the information that the state of California was holding on some money, and we contacted the state and we were able to get some money for our water. So it made the whole trip worthwhile. But not to mention that you have opportunities to not only meet with the representatives, but also with the other agencies like EPA, USDA, there's all kinds of DOJ, if you want to, you know, cops, you know, program grants, and there's a lot of information you can bring back.
Okay, and so this is, this is in conjunction with MCAG Association of Governments. All of the other representatives from the other cities in the county get to travel, and they coordinate meetings with different representatives and different agencies. So, so normally, Jennifer, is there any additional information that you might have in regards to this?
No, I think that Mayor Protem covered it quite well in terms of the opportunity to network and to get contacts with those public agencies that might be able to provide the city funding. It is a great idea, as you mentioned, to allow people to stagger going, to have new exposure and new opportunities, to have counsel be more aware of what's available.
Okay. So, at this moment, are there any questions or suggestions from the council before we go out to public, to citizens' comments? Are there any volunteers?
I nominate our mayor, and other three, you can pick a number between one and ten, and I'll see who wins. Mr. Roth, would you like to go? Or Mr. Mann, would you like to go?
I wouldn't mind, but I have to make sure it's okay with work.
Oh, okay. Do we have somebody more? Mr. Soto? Okay, Mr. Roth?
I'll volunteer myself to go.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you for volunteering. I don't know if we need a motion or just volunteers to go, or?
No, I believe for this, it's just, we just need to let MCAG know or their office who would be, who was selected.
There are some workshops to attend prior to going, so that way everybody's talking, when they meet, when they meet as a multi-jurisdictional, with the agency that everybody's on the same page about common goals, you know, regional transit and all that, you know, and then you can meet individually with your local, more of your local neighbor, so there'll be some workshops for that.
Yeah, so we do have until the deadline to let MCAG know or their office know who the people will be the ones that are going until, I believe it's the ninth or the tenth.
The tenth.
The tenth, right? So, in the meantime, in case, in case something comes up and I'm not able to go for, you know, but so right now, we can probably count on myself and Mr. Jason on attending. If something comes up before then, we'll wait a few days until, a few days before, just in case something comes up, comes up, so that we can give the right information. Is that okay? All right. So, Legal, based on, on the designation as discussion and potential items, this is, we don't need a formal?
Since you only have two spaces and you only have two volunteers, you don't need to have a formal motion for that.
Okay. All right. Okay, sounds good. Next, we have item number two, discussion and potential action on the joint powers of authority, the JPA agreement with MCAG. Jennifer?
Yes, so this is, excuse me, this is an agreement that is coming up on renewal, and the members of the board through MCAG have met to discuss the contract at length and have made certain recommendations, and our city attorney's office has reviewed it as well. Christina, do you have anything to add on this agreement or any of the contents of the agreement?
I might think everybody here is familiar with MCAG. It's a regional group of cities that, and plus the county, that their main goal is to gain funding for regional projects, and then there are representatives that serve on the board, such as Mayor Moran, who are focused on assisting the cities in particular, their own city in particular, in allocating that funding towards their specific needs as well. Legal has reviewed the agreement and was part of the negotiations, and I believe Mayor Moran has also been involved in part of the process in the last couple of meetings that they've had. So, if anybody has any questions specifically about the agreement, I can certainly respond to those.
So, actually, this JPA agreement, from my understanding, and then once again, this is, I have only been part of the MCAG meeting only once, and I became aware of this document back in June or July, based on, on watching one of their meetings, and, and started looking into it, but, so this should have been, or just updates should have been brought over to our council or to the council, but they, nobody ever, just, there was no information at that time. So, there was an extension from, I believe it was from December for three months until next month, when MCAG has, has, or is planning on taking action in regards to this JPA. And so what this is, is, MCAG is basically, it's an Association of Governments for all of Merced County entities or agencies. In this case, there are, there are six cities and the county that are being represented, but altogether there are eleven members that can vote. So there are eleven votes, one from each city, which is Los Baños, Gastine, Alwater, Merced, and Livingston, and the city of Merced, right? So there's six, and then plus five Board of Supervisors. And so that makes it eleven voting members, and this agreement, actually, I think it will expire in June or July, so what MCAG is trying to do is to make sure that it's signed before it expires. And it gives a big breakdown. The current JPA that I think you guys have in front of you is much different from, it has had a lot of changes. In the past, personally, I expressed some concerns in regards to that, to that previous agreement. Some of those concerns have been addressed, and some others have not, but maybe I just want to share what some of those concerns are, so that in time, when you have more time to review this agreement on your own, I know that you guys just had a copy just now, so it's probably not going to be enough time for you guys to review it in five minutes and really understand it. But some of my concerns that are still concerns that have not been addressed are, you can take notes, Article four, Section four, four point two, which it used to be, or the recommendation, well, one of the suggestions was to continue this, this contract to be ten years, but the, currently, the, the suggestion and the recommendation, as it's stated in the, in the document, is for thirty years, which to me seems like way too long, even though this, this, this Association of Governments has been there, I believe, since nineteen sixty-nine or some seventy-nine. It's been there a long time, but I think it's, having it for, for thirty years, it takes the leverage, some leverage to the, to the local entities, to the local cities. And then, once again, in the past, some other cities, some members of MCAG have expressed concern of why, if each city only has one vote, why does the county have five votes? You know, which, which, but then again, that is, so, that has been, as far as I can remember, probably part of different conversations in, for the, at least for almost two years that I know of, and also with previous councils from different agencies, from different cities. But currently, it's still, it's still said as, you know, five voting members for Merced County and only one per city, which, you know, I wish to, to find an explanation for that, you know, what makes one agency more important than others, where they can have five votes and everybody else has one. But then again, that is just my perspective. Another concern was Article nine point one, which is some of the language regarding withdrawal from MCG. I think, you know, but then again, that's just my point of view. It's not that, it's not that I'm expecting for us to withdraw from MCAG, but it's just some of the language is just kind of one-sided, but from my perspective. And then, Section nine point one, point B, it used to be that withdrawal from MCAG was, in the language was six months, now it's twelve months. The proposed, the proposal is twelve months. And then, nine point two, Section nine point two, the cost of withdrawal, different from the previous agreement, and arbitration, Section thirteen point six. And, and then again, I don't know, maybe it might also be, I'm just thinking right now at this point, it might also be a good idea for, 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 at least for me, I'm going to request a copy of the, the last previous agreement that was signed, just kind of comparing, compare that to this now, you know, because at least that will give me a better perspective on, to make sure that what are all of the changes, and I'm sure there are more, but, but, so I'm going to request staff, if I can have somehow a, a copy of the previous agreement, however long that was when it was signed, just for my own enjoyment and, you know, just, I figure I just spend the whole weekend reading, you know, no problem.
I'd be happy to give that to council.
Okay, thank you. And, and so, I guess, a little bit of history there, and, but, I don't know if you guys have any questions before we go out to public comment. It might be a little bit too much to digest in five minutes. Any questions, comments at this time? Counsel? So, I'm going to go out to public comment for this item in particular, item number two. Are there any questions on the phone? Hearing none. Any questions here in the, in the chambers? If you can please state your name for the record.
Is this contract for all the cities or everyone has their own independent contract? Is it the same one for all the cities that are in the MCAG, or?
Yeah, so my understanding is this is, this is the same contract for all, all of the cities, because they're all part of the same association, so it would be the same for the county, and the same for the other six, for the other five cities, yes.
So if Livingston changes, wants to make some changes to the, this contract, everybody, all the cities have to agree, or just?
Yeah, so, so let's say that Livingston doesn't agree on one item, it has to be taken back, and it has to be agreed on by the other agencies?
Yeah, it is a contract between all of the other cities in the county, so all parties have to agree to the terms.
Okay, and if Livingston wants to remove, they get a fine for removing themselves from MCAG?
According to this right now, not necessarily a fine, but based on this current document, that, that city that wants to withdraw from, from that association has to pay all the costs, whether it's costs associated by MCAG staff, they will be responsible, and then, and then they have to wait a year, and that is my understanding, yes.
Okay, so all these changes that came about, everybody agreed? Before this current contract, correct? Or it was just made up, or it was just?
Right now, it was just agreed upon MCAG, so it has gone out to the cities. So, Los Baños will be looking at this, Gastine, Alwater, Merced, Dos Palos, and ourselves. So, we don't know what Dos Palos or Gastine are gonna say until we bring it back to MCAG.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'm bringing this back to the dais. I definitely don't think that, I don't, I don't think I, I do want to have an action tonight. I do, I do want to give everyone an opportunity to really read this, because you, you guys just got it. This is a big, you know, I mean, it's important, like everything else, not only because it's thirty years, but because we should read upon it and see if we have any questions, and then you guys can address those questions to staff, or to Legal, or both, and somebody can, can try to respond to those questions. So, the good thing is that we have an opportunity to come back next month at our first meeting, and that should give us plenty of time to, before we take it back to MCAG. Any comments, questions? So, if you, if you guys are okay, I would like to continue this item. Okay, so we'll go ahead and continue this item and bring it back at our next meeting for the first month of, for the first meeting in February, okay? All right, so moving on to item number three. Item number three, discussion and potential action on memorandum of understanding with Merced County for fire protection services and staffing augmentation. Jennifer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers and members of the public. We actually have Assistant Chief Pimentel here as well, if there are any questions specific that he can answer that I'm unable to. This is an agreement that was previously held between the County of Merced and, excuse me, I'm sorry, yeah, the County of Merced and the City of Livingston for fire services. In that agreement, it provided for a single fire personnel to be on staff at our station, Station ninety-six, for every day. They work seventy-two hour shifts, they're there three sixty-five, and we've not had a lapse in service in the years that they've been providing that service. The current con, or the prior contract expired in the late nineties, and we've not had an active contract since then. This contract does provide not only for continuation of the services through the agreement, but also provides for a staffing augmentation that provides a two O staffing, which does then allow for there to be two bodies at the station seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days per year, which then affords them a more safe protocol when responding to fires or accidents. Also, it provides for the continuation of the fire district tax going to the county to provide that service. The offset of the additional staffing will be split evenly between the county and the city at a fifty-fifty rate, and we will be billed according to actual cost, what's in the admin report that was previously presented and will be presented as an estimate, but again, will be billed actuals. So I think I've covered it at a very high level, but if there's any questions that either I or Assistant Chief Pimentel can answer, we welcome them now from council.
Are there any questions at this time? So, something that I do want to add, I know that I've been part of some meetings and conversations for, for, probably for a few months, and there has been great conversations and, and great questions, and I think the current MOU document that we have here has been refined and has for the most part addressed has been refined and has for the most part addressed some of my concerns. And obviously, there's always room for improvement from my point of view. But you know, that's why we're here, giving everybody an opportunity to, so that we can address it as a group and figure out. I want to know what you guys think and hopefully you guys want to know what everybody else thinks and figure out what is your perspective, what are your questions, so that we can all come to a consensus. But maybe Chief, if you wanted to add anything to it in regards to this?
Good evening, Mark Pimentel. Good evening, council. Intern City Manager. Here on behalf of, I actually had the opportunity to speak in each of you individually and it was a great opportunity to cover all the details. I think this is a great way of moving forward. Like City Manager had mentioned prior, was this agreement is, there has not been an agreement between the city and the county for quite some time. So moving forward with this agreement and having something in place that shows that we are working and with the direction of providing a high level of service for your city, working along with the county and the county coming together as an opportunity to work in that split favors providing half of that staffing to make it so that the city has that 2O staffing. I think is a testament of what they want to get and when they show that that better service. Because I believe with the fire service as it goes now, the call volume is not dropping. It is increasing and having just one individual on a fire truck is inappropriate and we need to figure out that. And the county has been full force of moving forward with all of our stations throughout the county. And with your assistance, it will actually happen here a lot sooner than some of the other stations that we're trying to work on throughout the county. But again, if you have any questions, concerns, comments, please feel free to ask. I'll hear for anything, thanks.
So I, well, a question, but for the benefit of everybody else and people watching, one of the confusions that I had at the beginning is, you know, there's, it's hard to understand sometimes all of that language. So right now, we only have one body at the station. We want to have two. And so what that means is that when we say we want to have two, we want to have two bodies 24/7, right? And so even though we're only getting one more body per shift, but we need to have three to be able to cover 20, the entire 24 hours, right? So that's why we're looking at to pay three new people. But the city is only paying for one and a half and the county is paying for one and a half.
Yes, Mayor, you got it, that's perfect. When you look at positions, we had to look at positions within those facilities. Positions take about three bodies to fill one position. So as you move forward to additional position, obviously, we were looking at three, another three personnel. So after this is all done, if upon your approval and with the counties as well, we would look at six personnel that would be assigned to Station 96. And again, going back to that one additional staffing, it would be 1.5 for the city and 1.5 for the county.
And I had something else in mind. It was one of those other questions that were very... I'll come back to it. But one of the other items, just for everyone's also knowledge, in the previous document, we had, we had language in regards to the...
Volunteers?
The volunteers, what's the name of that group?
I'm sorry?
So the volunteers, right? And now as of this new document, that language that mentions the volunteers as a separate group, as a volunteer group, as a nonprofit group, has been separated so that we can keep it separate and then we can work on that other part of it separately by itself.
Yes, in that previous language, there was language in regards to the city's volunteers. After speaking with legal, we decided that the appropriate way is to just deal a business with the county and the city. The city already has Title VII, the code of Title VII, and identifies the hierarchy or the positions and all their responsibilities as your volunteers, which is, that's your city's responsibility. The county has paid call firefighters, which also live in the city, but they are county employees and they are our responsibility and we will take on those responsibilities as a county.
And just so that, because I know I was only able to meet with only one other council member when we met with you this last time, because we're not allowed to meet with everybody else. But just one of my personal suggestions was that this current document is written to be a 10-year agreement. And to me, it's, I've been kind of working myself around, we've been talking about why not three years, why not four years or maybe five years? But that was just for, you know, so.
The agreement's for 10 years?
10 years.
Yeah, it will go for 10 years to align with your property share tax so that each year you're working for that agreement. You're kind of addressing your fire service agreement along with your property share tax with the county so that it can be addressed. Again, as we talked previously about is that there is language in this document to allow you to come to the table with the county. Again, if there's a need to have some further discussion and readdress maybe issues that you think that need to be taken care of. The language is written in there for both parties to be able to come together, sit down and discuss things that if the need isn't being met, that we can address that and meet that at that time.
And I would add that having a 10-year agreement with a fixed, not to exceed amount, does protect the city from a budget perspective as well.
Are there questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have, I'm not sure if you're still the volunteer chief or deputy chief, Mr. Bates? Would you like to speak to this item?
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Sorry, I should ask first. Mr. Pimentel, I know we met, as you know, we met Wednesday. Maybe I misunderstood, maybe I'm getting too old. But I thought we were going to meet, you know, with the couple of people from the volunteer company and ourselves, you know? And all of a sudden, I see this on the agenda. I'm not sure where something shifted. I thought we were going to have that before this came up, you know? So I still like to have that, you know? As I asked for my request, I know Mr. Roth was in there before we moved forward. Just to clarify, I know I don't have a problem with this agreement. Time has come, Livingston's 14, 15, depending on you ask. 2.0 is needed, you know? That's, no one can dispute that fact, especially me, you know? I've been trying to do this for years. I really, really, like I told you privately and hope you don't mind me stating this publicly, but I really, really like to hear from our, I know you call them county volunteers, but to me, they're Livingston volunteers. They always will be, you know?
Yes, they are county, they are city volunteers and they are paid call firefighters for the county. And those are two different things.
Yeah, so I was still, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect to, I hope we didn't waste your time, I don't know, there's four others, but I would still like to set this up ASAP to meet with, you know, Mayor can appoint somebody or we can just meet ourselves with your staff, you know, your folks and a couple of folks from the volunteers to hash anything out that we need to hash out and then we can move forward, you know?
I'm not sure that we need to appoint because unless it's...
No, I understand. But I mean, Mr. Roth and I requested that we have a meeting, but I want to make sure, I know three of us can't meet, we all know that. But if somebody feels like they want to be part of it, you know, that's fine. But otherwise, we definitely like to meet with them, you know, and address the concerns.
I would like to add that, yes, your request is documented and we will make certain that that happens. The point of this meeting was as we met with the individual groups, the intention of this was to have a more dynamic discussion that's agendized.
Got it, thank you.
Not, I don't have an admin report, there's no, there's no...
Right, right.
The contract's not being presented for approval. It was really just intended for us to get clarity and to open the floor up for additional content or conversation so that we can bring it forward. The ask for the meeting will still be fulfilled.
Yeah.
But because all of the volunteer language has been removed from the agreement, we really did feel that that was separate and apart from us being able to move forward with the county.
Yeah, and because the language was approved, is reason I have my drawback, not drawback, but kind of reserved a little bit until we addressed that, you know?
Just, just...
Just separating it.
I understand. The county, the county doesn't have anything involved with the city's volunteers. So this agreement is strictly between the county's fire department and the City of Livingston. So the discussion that we'll have with the volunteers will have no impartial to this agreement.
Mr. Mayor, with your request, if I may ask Mr. Bates to come forward. I don't want to put you on the spot if you don't want to. But maybe, Mr. Pimentel, you're here, Mr. Bates here. Maybe you guys can give us a couple of some dates so we can all sit down?
Like I said, we'd be more than happy to schedule a date with you. I wasn't aware of this meeting until we saw it on your special announcement. So that meeting was, my full intention was to provide that meeting as well. And we would be more than happy to provide some dates for you to best accommodate your time as well. So again, it's, that meeting will be something that we look forward to helping the volunteers out like we discussed in our previous meeting. Again, that meeting does not have anything reflected in this agreement. So just to let you know.
We understand.
So I mean, I think from legal's perspective and from our perspective, you guys can meet as long as there's only two of you.
Yes.
So it should be no problem. And also one of the reasons that, the idea to have this added here so we can have this conversation and kind of get a little bit, to share some of that information with the rest of the members on the council. So that, you know, when they go out and read this, they have a better understanding and at least just a little bit of history about, because, you know, you guys never seen this before other than the last time, the last time either we met with Mr. Pimentel or you guys met with him too, so.
Yeah.
So it was mostly just to kind of have a conversation so that we can, when we come back, we would have less questions and...
Yeah, and I do want to go on the record to thank Mr. Pimentel for taking the time to meet with each and every council member. It shows a lot about what everybody's trying to accomplish and how important this is. So I do want to thank you personally on that too.
No, thank you guys for your time. We really appreciate the opportunity.
So would you be reaching out to the volunteers or Mr. Bates? Are you the chief? I always see you as a chief all my life, I don't know, 40 years, you know? So do you have a couple of minutes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, council, my name's David Bates. I'm currently the assistant company chief. I've previously served for a number of years as chief, which is why he...
I always call you chief.
Yeah, so. But at present, I am the company assistant chief.
Wasn't your first fire truck, do you guys have that hand pump when you were the chief? Close?
I don't go back quite that far. Almost.
40 years is a long time.
Yes, it is.
But what we were hoping to accomplish, and I'm just speaking for myself and I'm sure there's probably the same concern, is I was somewhat confused. I always saw our volunteers as Livingston volunteers. I know county pays you, but I'm sorry, but I need to have you guys put that Livingston patch back up on your sleeves, you know? So that's my...
So far, that has not come off. So far, that has not come off.
Yeah, but I want to make sure that it stays on, you know? I've seen the old patches, you know, and I want to see shirts that say Livingston firefighter, you know, because community sees you as us, you know, as city, you know? And I'm sure everybody here sees you guys not as county but as city, you know? And we want to make sure that our folks don't miss that, you know? Maybe it's nostalgic, maybe not, but it's important to us. And that we also get input from our volunteers.
Well, we're certainly, we're certainly willing to meet in whatever form, whatever forum you pick.
So who's the chief, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
So if you guys can coordinate with Mr. Pimentel and give us, I don't know, is it okay with the mayor of, Mr. Roth and I meet with them? Is that okay with everybody? If you can just coordinate with them and give us a couple of dates and that we can kind of connect just to make sure that we get this all squared away and we can move forward?
Certainly. During regular daytime or evenings such as this or?
Mr. Roth and I believe we have a very similar schedule around five-ish.
Okay, we can work with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be happy to set something up.
Yeah, so we can meet at the fire station. Good place to meet.
Just fine.
Good place to meet, you know, and, okay?
Okay, very good.
Mr. Pimentel, are you okay with that, sir? Before you guys go, I want to let, I spoke enough. I want to let other three speak as well, so.
Yes, I was also understanding that we were going to meet all together. But yes, I would like to meet with our local volunteers, so that's it.
Any other questions, comments? So only one ask that hopefully is way before our next meeting. So that, which is going to be on the 7th, I believe, our next meeting, so.
Correct, and if that meeting is able to be accomplished before, I'm happy to bring to council for action an admin report along with the contract with the request to approve. This was merely meant for conversation, thank you.
All right, I don't remember, yes, okay, okay, so thank you. So I'm going to bring this out for public comment. Anyone on the phone in regards to this item? Bringing this back to the chambers, any public comment here in the chambers?
I've seen previous documents that have come through on this issue. I have not seen an updated copy, so I'm really not familiar with how things have progressed. So prior to our meeting with Mr. Sam and Mr. Roth, if we could get a copy of that for our review, we'd appreciate that. Oh, okay.
Are you asking for it for purposes of the meeting with the volunteers?
Yes, the meeting that Mr. Sam has requested with himself, Mr. Roth and representatives of the volunteer company, Chief Pimentel.
Right, I think it may be if we can have a discussion about the purpose of that for the purpose of the volunteers since this county agreement doesn't have any bearing on the volunteers. I'm not sure, and since it is a draft form right now, we wouldn't want to make it public before it is adopted. But if it is for specific business purposes associated with the county, that would be a different story.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We could ask the county if you can share this document at our meeting, if they're okay with it, that would be, would that be okay? If the county is saying, okay, go ahead and use it for a meeting? Would that be legal or do you wish to research and let us know?
I think maybe a further discussion offline would be more appropriate.
Let you know, Mr. Bates.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, and then just for clarification, this current document does not have the previous or any language related to the volunteer company was separated. the, the previous or any language related to the volunteer company was separated.
Okay.
So in this current document that we have before us, there's no language at all or mention to the volunteer company. And that's why I said previously that we, as a city, we were going to continue having that conversation with the county and the volunteer company in regards to that. And I know that in our, in at least the previous document that I reviewed, there was language that included the volunteer company, but not in this current one.
Okay.
So we, it was separated just to be able to better work one thing at a time and just give us more time to work and see what we can do and support the volunteer company. I don't know if that makes sense?
No, I'm, I'm good, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
It's my understanding that our volunteers also serve as paid call firefighters as well? So that's included in this extra, in this, as paid call volunteers? Because they, you serve as a volunteer for City of Livingston and within this contract? Yes?
So, so yes, you, you're right. So I also think, and it is my understanding, and if not, maybe someone can clarify. So there's two aspects, for instance, to Mr. Bates. He serves as a volunteer with the volunteer company, but he also serves as a...
Paid call firefighter with Merced County Fire Department.
So that just, I think it separates the two things. So, I don't know, am I right?
Yes. It's, they are two separate entities, just as you guys have different jobs from being councilmembers. You are a council member, and then you are also employed with your employer, but they are not even, I mean, they're, they're serving a similar purpose, but these are two completely separate roles as far as this contract and the additional conversations that are going to occur with the volunteer company.
It, it is a little bit confusing, but...
Basically, the, the volunteer company is a, is a nonprofit organization.
Yeah, it is a bit confusing, but it's, we've been doing it for a lot of years this way.
Well, it took me, I don't know, like, three, four months to get to this point to figure, I still, to kind of figure some things out. Some other things are still, you know? But any additional clarifications?
So just, just one if it helps. If it doesn't, I apologize for wasting the council's time. But if we think about them as volunteers, they would be operating under a nonprofit 501(c)(3). They do their fundraising. The people who donate to the Pancake Breakfast, Fill the Boot, whatever the fundraising event is, has an option to reduce that from their taxes as a donation to a nonprofit. When they're servicing the community as a paid call firefighter, they're actually employed by the County of Merced and paid for their time. So it is two completely separate activities. They're operating under two completely separate set of rules. And one, they are their own employee and employer relationship as a volunteer. And the other, they are acting in accordance with their rules under the County of Merced. It's like being a band booster versus the school district. It is a separate entity. And please add clarification, Christina.
Yeah, I will just add from a legal's perspective, it's a liability issue, right? So when, under this contract with the county, the paid call firefighters, everything they do is under the liability of the county, whereas when they're operating as volunteers, the county does not have any liability for them. So that's probably the biggest distinction.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you so much. Anything else you want to add?
Not at this time.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, once again, my, my recommendation would be to continue this item? Yes, I mean, but, okay, great. So more reading, more research, more questions, and just make sure you get all of, all of those answered by, before the next meeting. All right, so...
That's the teacher in you, giving us homework on weekends.
Yeah, you got homework now. All right, so that concludes our open session items. But at this time, we're going to move to closed session. But I'm going to open for public comment for closed session. We have item number four, public employment title interim city manager, according to government code section 54957. And item number five, conference with legal counsel, potential litigation. Paragraph, we have two, I think it's two, no. Paragraph two of subdivision D of section 54956, point nine of the government code. Number of, number of cases, one matter. Are there any comment, public comments in regards to closed session? On the phone? In the chambers? Scene nine. We adjourned this meeting at 6:52. And we'll come back.